Okay, we should be all set to go.
Okay. I think I got things together here, so. Everyone ready to go? I would like to make a motion to open our planning board meeting.
Second.
And zoning board.
Second.
How do you vote? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. To welcome everybody. We have a regular meeting of the planning board and zoning board of appeals. It's April 5th, and this is a hybrid meeting. Meaning people can attend either online or in person. It's noticed on the Village website. There's a link to the meeting so anyone can join. And Dorothea, do we have any online attendees right now?
Yes, see you.
Okay. If anyone is attending online and would like to make comments, we will be opening public hearings for applications on our agenda. We'll be taking public comments. And we'll give some directions at the time when we get there. But you can either type in comments in the comment field, or you can hit the raise hand button if you want to speak. Okay, well, first of all, going over the order of applications tonight. As I just mentioned, I'd like to keep 5 State Street last because I think we're going to be spending the most time on it. And I'd like to get through the other applications as soon as we can and put them first. So the order I would like to go tonight is to start with 25 South Main. Then I would like to do 50 State Street Copper Leaf Brewing, number two. Then I would like to do 5 Austin Park as number three. My understanding is 8 State Street is off our agenda for tonight because the applicants can attend.
It is my understanding.
Okay. So if... So I will presume that we will skim over that one pretty quickly here. Mindy, if they're not here, can we open the public hearing for it, or does it have to get re-noticed?
I think we should be noted.
Okay. So then if they're not here, then it will just be stricken from the agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, that makes sense. Makes sense to you, Dorothea?
Works for me.
Okay. And then, so that would be 5 State Street would be number four on the list. Okay, so let's start with the first one, 25 South Main Street. Is the applicant here? Are they online?
We'll go with the name Mr. Phallett if you are on or if you can raise your hand, that would be appreciated. Nobody I'm seeing is... I cannot give you a definitive no, but it does not look like it.
Okay. Well, let's move on then to Copper Leaf. If Mr. Phallett is on later, then we can get back to that one. Okay. Copper Leaf, are... Is anyone present? Yeah, you are.
You're up there.
You can come up here. Now, this is a renewal from last year, and so I... We can keep your presentation fairly short, I think, because nothing's changed, right?
Nothing has changed. Since that's been put in, I had some emails, press calls, and it's corded, but it's one of the...
Oh, absolutely.
Any questions you folks have? My name's Brian Meyer, I'm with Copper Leaf Brewing. One of your owners.
Okay. Well, great. So you want to give like a two-minute introduction to what's going on?
Yep, it's a renewal of our same request from last year to do the outdoor seating. We've... I put pictures in there. There's just an area that we basically paint off. Just before the start of service, we set up some around that table, some small chairs. And at the end of service, we pull them all up so that that area stays clearly busy as a fireway. And we dispose that during service for folks to come. And we don't allow the alcohol to be used outside of that area. And we keep it all clean. There's no music. People last year were pretty respectful and quiet. And actually, it's kind of nice because with the traffic, it kind of forces the flow to go normally while the cars kind of drive hobbily. It was very well received last year, and so we just wanted to do it again this year.
Okay. Hey, Steve, are you around? Waiting for the building inspector. I wanted to ask him a couple of questions about how things went last year and any opinions he has.
Tell me about this in just a second. I think he's trying to reach out to the first.
Okay. So the... Steve?
Yeah.
Okay, we have Copper Leaf.
Yes.
Here. So I was wondering if you could give a summary of operations last year? If... How it ran, if you had any complaints, those type of things.
Not one, yeah. They ran well. They were putting things up, they're back in every night. There's not one complaining about noise or refuse or anything. It seemed to work very well though, into the votes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I just thought I got a call from Mr. Phallett. He didn't realize the site he's going to call in. So if we can take him, you know, when he calls in here.
All right, we'll take him when he calls in here. Yep. Any questions from anybody? Actually, let's open the public hearing and see what people have to say. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. So if anyone in the room... We'll start off in the room and then we'll go online. Does anyone in the room wish to make any comments regarding the Copper Leaf seating area? Okay, no. Does anyone online wish to make any comments regarding the Copper Leaf seating area?
I do have comments and a question to answer.
So if you would like to speak, you can click the raise hand button. Or if you want to type a comment, you can type a comment and the clerk can read it to us.
Okay. Our peer 70 State Street able to state section of code which allows for an agricultural use to be issued a special permit or a special use for outdoor seating. I think that is his question. We'll jumble here. Able to state the section of the code which allows for agricultural use, a special use for outdoor seating.
So if I asked this question, I would refer him to our minutes from June 1st of 2022. That thoroughly gave the thorough background and the legal background behind our decision.
And now Mr. Pierce has raised his hand.
Okay.
Mr. Pierce, you're able to speak?
Can I hear you now?
Yes, you can.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Chair, I really appreciate an answer to that question rather than having myself and other residents have to go back and look at past minutes.
Is that your only comment? May I jump in?
Sure.
Justin Hine. I mean, this is really more appropriate for public comment. It's not a question and answer session for the PCBA. So it's entirely appropriate for the chair to refer the public back to last year's meeting minutes, which did discuss both of those issues exhaustively.
Well, I respectfully disagree with the fact that the board can't address or state specifically the reason. And rather than directing the residents to go back and search records. If you put that on the record, please.
Okay, thank you. It was like something like three to six pages of documentation, which is why I'm suggesting you go and read it. It was not a short description. So the main thing I'm interested in is if anyone wants to report any changes or concerns or so on that they have, we're receptive to hearing any comments from the public about the impacts on this. And does anybody else wish to speak?
I do not have any other questions or questions in the Q and A.
Okay. All right. Does any board members have any questions?
The emails?
Yes, you have emails?
Who wants them?
Want to read any of them, Dorothea?
Sure. Brennan Van Norman. She states, "To whom it may concern, I would like to share my support and interest in the Copper Leaf Brewing having outdoor seating again this year. This establishment is not only a beloved neighborhood business to my own, but an integral part of the community of Northfield Common. The addition of outdoor seating was so well received last year, not only does it allow for Copper Leaf Brewing to serve more patrons, but it allows more of the community to gather at our establishments and enjoy the warm weather seasons together. And look forward to frequenting the outdoor seating at Copper Leaf Brewing again this summer."
Okay.
You do... There are several of these. Do you want me to read them out?
What?
Are they all in support?
In support. In support.
They can just be part of the record, then, right?
They're all in support.
Mm-hmm. Okay, a little bit part of the record. Okay, well, thank you for reaching out and commenting. Okay. If no one else wishes to speak, I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So I would like to make a motion to approve a resolution for this. And the resolution will be identical to last year's, except we'll add a whereas paragraph stating that it was approved on June 1st, 22, last year. And this application is a renewal of that application. Otherwise, I would like to essentially keep the resolution unchanged.
We also had that the code enforcement officer noted that there had been no complaints about the operations last year pursuant to last year's permit.
Yes, let's add that as a finding, thank you. I think that's an excellent addition.
And that was the motion, right?
Yep, that was a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Okay. Any comments from the board? Okay, I will vote aye.
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 Okay, motion approved. Okay, thank you very much. Here's a copy of our decision from last year, if you haven't seen it. But we're effectively adopting the same one.
Okay, is that my copy or just my...
If you want to look at it, that's fine. We don't need it anymore. We'll do an update and get this out.
I think I have it from last year.
Okay.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Okay, is... First person here, Mr. Phallett, is he online?
Again, I don't believe he is. I will just put out the call. Mr. Phallett, you're online, please raise your hand. Okay. Oh, yes, he is. All right. Okay, Mr. Phallett, you're able to speak. Okay, Mr. Phallett, you should be able to speak.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Excellent, thank you. Apologize for being a couple of minutes late. So my fiance and I had just acquired a property on 25 South Main Street from Dr. Rosen and his wife Maxine. We just closed last week, so relatively new to the area, but we're excited. There is currently a bump out that's encroaching on the neighbor's property, which is historically known to be a minor pull-in or extension of the wall that used to be used for a garage so they could sneak their car in. So it's about a 10 by 3 by 14-foot bump out that's going to need to be removed to not be encroaching on the neighbor's property. So the basis of this application is to remove that bump out and replace the siding and same as existing that's there.
Okay. So just to give a brief introduction to you, you weren't here in the beginning, but there's an application for site plan review. And Steve, some of these minor changes to buildings and so on in commercial districts, a lot of them trigger minor site plan review, correct? And the purpose here is to take a look at it. And our primary concern is typically how it would impact, if there's any adverse impacts on adjacent properties. So this sounds like a pretty small change here to the property. You're not actually constructing anything. You're just removing it and then repairing the siding, is my understanding. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So...
Yeah, I was gonna say it's actually detrimental to the neighbor property because he can't maintain his building because that little outpropping is actually up against the neighbor's property. And it goes on and in property now, against the building.
So it's too... It's too close to the building, so there's... It can't get in there to do maintenance. Okay. And Steve, in your opinion, is there any issues with drainage or anything else like that?
I'm actually making battle right now, streaming on to the neighbor's building.
Okay. Let's see if we have any other questions. And Steve, in your opinion, this is not creating any zoning violations, correct?
No.
And does the fire marshal have any comments on this?
No concerns.
No concerns. And again, you have no safety concerns. It sounds like it's going to make situations better by improving access.
I consider the remedy actually...
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Let's open the public hearing, see if anyone has any comments.
You gonna make a motion?
Yeah, so... Oh, first of all, before we get into this, I didn't ask about conflict of interest disclosure.
None, none for me.
Does anyone have a conflict of interest? None for me.
None, none for me.
Okay. All members?
Nor do I.
All members indicated there's no conflicts of interest. Thank you. Sorry for forgetting that, and thank you for the reminder. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to open the public hearing for 25 South Main.
Second.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, first of all, is there anyone in the room wishing to comment? Okay, no. Is there anyone online wishing to comment? If you'd like to comment, you can click the raise hand button or type a comment in the comment field. Okay. All right, then I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. So we have a resolution template here, and I think almost all of our normal considerations are not applicable here. So drainage, we hear is improving. Parking, bicycle access, vehicle access are not changing. Landscaping is not changing, it's just being repaired. Signage, lighting, water systems, not changing. Drainage is improving. Trash is not changing, and snow is not changing. So those are my findings, I think. Does that sound good to everybody?
Sounds great.
Be quick about it. And then Steve, no concerns about any health or safety impacts, correct? Okay. Okay, so with those simple findings, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution for 25 South Main Street. And I want to note that we may want to go over some of these conditions of approval here. I added one that's atypical, so... But anyway, I have a motion of approval here to adopt a resolution as discussed.
Second.
So let's go ahead and discuss this. I have three conditions of approval in here. First is that the HPB will approve this, which they're going to the HPB, correct?
Correct.
Second condition of approval is the applicant has to get a building permit within one year of the adoption date of this resolution. If you cannot get one within a year, you can come back and ask for an extension. And we pretty much have to grant one as long as nothing has changed. So, but we do have to have expiration times on these things. The third one, I put in a clause in here that said that we are only approving the demolition of the bump out structure and associated repairs. That's the only thing we're looking at and approving. Other site plan conditions like lighting, landscaping, drainage, parking, and all other typical site plan aspects are not part of this review. So I just wanted to make that clear. So if this gets approved, we're... This is all we're commenting on because there is a plan out there. So any comments on that?
No.
Okay. All right, well, we had a motion on the floor. I'll vote aye.
Aye.
Is there a second?
I did second.
Oh. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so you are approved. And we will follow up with a written copy of our decision. And your next step, I believe, is to talk to the preservation board. And you're working with the building inspector on getting your permits and helping you through the process. So thank you very much. All right, the next one we have is 5 Austin Park. Is there anyone from 5 Austin Park here? Yes.
Do you want to sit here or...
Sorry, you can come up to the table. They're usually pretty friendly around here.
My name is Patrick Morbidio. I'm Paul's dad. I'm substituting for him tonight. He is the applicant for this project.
And is he the property owner or the architect?
He's the architect, the agent. The owners... The owners are Gary Timlin and John Marl.
Okay.
These are maybe clients.
Actually, I should get my stack of papers before me. 5 Austin Park. I think I'm missing one.
Oh, yeah, we are. For the site plan.
Missing the site plan one. That needed to be considered. Yes, we... Yes, we have that. Okay.
I brought a set of drawings.
Yeah, I want to get a set of drawings out. Those look way better than the ones we have here in 111 by coming in.
The site... This is the light outline. This is the outline of the existing house, the existing garage. The owners wanted to be able to expand the garage so that they could get a vehicle in there and have some storage. Right? They have a motorcycle and some other items that they want to be able to store in the garage. And this addition will accommodate that. The other need was they are... They have a bit of an expanding family, so we needed to add a master bedroom, which is going to go over the existing garage structure. And also adding 12 feet 4 inches to the back of the house in order to provide additional living space and a home office. And then the other thing that was happening was the... The... Just basically the concrete stoop that leads to the front door. They wanted to develop a porch that goes all the way across the front of the house. I have elevations up it as well.
Okay.
Both existing and proposed. So if you can take a look.
Yeah, so we can go through that. So just in summary here, my notes are it's about 800 square foot addition to living space. The garage, you're adding about 200 square feet, and you're adding 168 square foot porch.
Right.
So those are approximate numbers. Those aren't exact. So it's a good amount of... Eight hundred square feet, a good amount of additional living space for a growing family. And some of it is over the garage and some of it is here, correct?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, we can take a look at that. So the first floor, this is the outline of the existing building. So this additional garage space happens here. We renovated the first floor to put an office in the front and expanded the back area. And we're redoing the kitchen and dining space with making an open concept type plan. And then the second floor gets a master bedroom over the...
And this is all new?
This is all new, yeah. I think this is all existing.
Okay.
Not changing.
So the primary things I'm interested in is how this might impact neighboring properties and adjacent properties. For the most part, the design details are what you want to do if they're not causing problems. That's a few. If there's issues, that's what we're here to take a look at. So...
The next pages are the existing drawings.
So the next pages are the existing drawings. And did we have the front elevations of the revised project here?
Yes, it's a previous page to this one.
Do we have the... Do we have both of these?
I can... Be speaker?
Maybe I can follow one, but I can't connect these. All right. Take a look at it. Is this in here? Oh, shit. It'll be beautiful up here by the end of the meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Okay, so in the... So first of all, we have the front. So this is the existing front. You have the garage in the house.
Right.
This is the new one, so you're adding the second floor and a new window. And you're also modifying the roof line here a little bit.
Correct.
And you're adding the porch over the front.
Correct.
And so that's what you're going to see from the street. The other views are going to be much more minimally visible. Is that correct?
I think so, no.
Okay, so the rear. Just trying to go over the changes here.
This is the extension of the gathering room.
Okay, so right now...
And there is a... We're basically just extending this existing roof.
Okay, so it's going straight back.
And then, but this area here gets to be two stories.
Okay, so the area by the garage is two stories. You're extending back. And is this a rear door? Or this is the rear door?
It's a door.
Okay, and that's a new window.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, and then the... We have the right side and the left side elevations. So the right side elevations...
Some window changes on the first floor.
So you have new window... This window is replacing this one.
Correct.
And then you're extending backwards.
That's correct.
You have the rear door. And then on the side, you have... You're replacing a single window with a triple window. And these other three windows are actually staying the same, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then on the left side... So this is the other side here. This is where you're going up for the garage, and you're extending it out to the back.
Yes.
Okay, so that's the two story area, if you don't mind. All right, anyone have any questions?
Yes, it's clear what the plan is.
Okay, and any new light fixtures that you're installing? You have the one on the porch here?
There's one here on the porch, and there's one on either side of the overhead door.
Okay, on either side of the door. I believe in your drawings, you said you're going to have just used fixtures with a single bulb under 75 watt equivalent for less. And Steve, that meets all your concerns for lighting by entrances and so on?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so the building inspector says there's no concerns about lighting and compliance with the code. Now, as far as drainage goes, how is that working?
I don't really know that we're... There's drainage patterns that are going to change.
So you are just putting new downspouts? And you are going to go on supply box or something?
Most likely, yeah.
Okay. Steve, have you taken a look at their site there? And it looks... doesn't look like they're close to any property lines. Did you have any concerns about drainage?
No, because technically, you're basically all in the same place that there was before.
Okay.
The bad section, not increasing the footprints, so it's the same exactly as all the downspouts.
Yeah, so I mean, one of our main goals is to make sure if you have water, it's not running on your neighbor's property.
Of course.
If it's... if you're handling it in your backyard and there's room for it, fine. Same thing with lighting, we don't want bright lights spilling on the neighbor's property. But you're agreeing to put in pretty low brightness fixtures. So those are things that I don't see any cause for concern here. And for your landscaping, from your letter, basically, you're going to disturb the area and it sounds like you're just going to replant. And the site's already landscaped, and you're just going to repair, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, well, let's... Anyone else have any questions? Otherwise, we can open the public hearing.
I have a dumb question.
Go ahead.
Do we do both the planning and the zoning at the same time? Because this is a... there's a variance application.
Yes, we will do the variance application. So what we typically do is we will go through and do the variance application first. We will discuss our findings and why it complies with each of the criteria. And then we would go with the site plan application and do the same thing for that.
This is my first time with the building. So I didn't know. I wasn't sure if you were...
They often come in pairs. Like, I think every site plan is a variance, just about. Till we update... till code gets some updates. Oh, I thought I had a sample here, but... So let's go ahead and open the public hearing.
Second, if that was a motion.
Yes, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing. Okay, how do you vote? Aye? Okay, is there anyone in the room that would like to comment on this application? If anyone that would like to comment on this application, you can please click here at the raise hand button or turn to comment. Nothing? Okay. All right, then, I guess... Well, let's discuss this before we close the public hearing. It doesn't sound like there's any issues far as they have impacts on neighboring properties. My only concern with this is you're making a lot of architectural changes, and you haven't been to the architectural review board yet, is that correct?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay, so oftentimes, I mean, additions they handle, but they are often not... Let's just say they like people to keep their existing windows if they can and like to maintain the existing house. So I can't speak for them as to what they want to do. But what I usually... What works best with these applications is if there's an initial look, and if there's any concerns that the boards have, if we all get out front of them and get a list of any changes requested, and then the applicant can update them all at once, and then we do all the approvals. So with that said, I personally would feel a little better if we at least had a chance to get some feedback from them to see if they have any requests for changes architecturally.
From the architecture.
From the architectural review board. Because that... we were giving you an area variance. If we approve it for lot coverage, any changes they make are going to change the lot coverage. So we don't want you to have to come back here twice. Same thing with the site plan, we should both be approving the same set of plans. So if they... they often request little changes in the architecture. So at least that's my opinion, is I would prefer to defer on this until you have a chance to at least talk to the historic preservation board and get some feedback on it. Any other members, do you have any thoughts on this?
No, I think that actually it's going to be more efficient in the long run.
Okay, and you wouldn't grant the conditional approval of the...
Go ahead.
The whole purpose of moving the meetings around was to avoid this.
Well, the other thing is if we approve something, condition on their approval, and then they approve something different, then they have to come back to us.
But that's the reality. Now you're forcing them to come back versus if... What if they go and he gets approval from them? He can move forward, or the homeowner can move forward. The purpose of moving these meetings in the other order was so people did not have to go HPP and then the next month to planning and zoning. If you give them approvals and the HPP decides they don't like it, what you've done is, you know, mute it. So they might have to come back. But if they have all the approvals and HPP approvals, these people who are on their way get their permit and start their project. That was the whole purpose of why we changed the order of the meetings.
Okay, so that may be true. My other comment is a lot of the applications we've seen have had people go in, at least for information only, to the historic preservation board. And I don't think we've seen one yet where they haven't asked for changes. And then the changes come in, and then they come before us. So I'll just open it up to other board members. What do people think they want to do with this?
If you make any decision, you may contention on them being approved too.
Thoughts? No thoughts?
I think what you say makes sense.
Any other thoughts?
If we delay, we could have... Is there time to have another meeting?
I have no objection to having a special meeting shortly after the preservation board's meeting.
That way you wouldn't have to wait until May, the May meeting.
And if we ask for any changes to the other plans here, we could have a special meeting and handle any final reviews of that as well. I'm not saying what we're going to do with that one yet, but...
Dorothy, when is the HPP meet? Is it Monday?
13th.
17th.
Oh, 17th.
17th.
Yes.
And what's the submission deadline?
For the preservation board or for us?
Preservation board.
I think the preservation board should have been submitted already.
Yeah, no, well, he has submitted, the deadline is the 13th. So he's in their end of the 17th.
We are.
Yes.
So let's just say, if you were to get some feedback from them on the 17th, how long would it take you approximately to update drawings and be able to present something back to us?
It depends on what they ask for.
Yeah, I have no idea what they ask for.
You know, a week or so, I would say.
A week or so. So what do we, from the 17th?
I'm going to say that we have... I have to take a look. You have several conflicts in the month of April.
Okay, well, maybe we can... We could take that into account, and we can discuss this later. But if we're going to keep this open, we have to announce a date that we're going to re-meet to hear this. Oh, here it is, it's under this pile of papers.
Well, you could meet the 24th.
That was a week from the 17th.
24th currently is open. Is that Monday?
It's Monday. Any members have comments on this?
No problem.
No problem? Any 24th or 25th, will both days work for you?
Yeah.
You too? Dorothy, is the 25th open?
The 25th is open at this time.
Okay, I'm just saying proposing the 25th, so there's an extra day possibly, so that it can... If he needs a week to get it in, they can get it in, and we can get it on the website in advance. So anyone can take a look at it prior to the meeting. How long in advance do we need this if the hearing is already open to publish updated drawings? Is it just before the meeting?
As soon as it's reasonable, it can be just before the meeting if that's reasonable.
Okay, we haven't heard any comments yet.
Right.
So...
We actually now have a public comment when you're ready.
Sure, we have the public hearing is open, so do they raise their hand or are they just have a comment?
They were put in Q and A for me to ask.
Okay.
So it's Art Pierce, 70 State Street. Suggest the PZBA approve the current site plan and grant variance subject to HPP comments.
Okay. My opinion is I would still like to get feedback from them. And we don't normally look at it in detail, but we also have obligations to make sure this complies with our historic preservation guidelines. And given they're changing the front facade in particular and changing a number of windows, I would really appreciate some feedback from the HPP, is my particular opinion. If it was just a typical rear addition, I would feel differently.
Right.
But given the prominence and visibility of this, I would appreciate an extra set of eyes on it, is my thought.
Yeah, it's a more substantial change. Certainly, the HPP is going to weigh in on it. So, yeah, I'm good with delaying.
Okay. So I will go ahead and make a motion then to keep the public hearing open and schedule a meeting for Tuesday, the 25th of April, to continue discussion of this. And what time can we schedule that meeting for, Dorothy?
Anytime.
Do you want to keep it at 6:30? Do you want to go earlier, 6 o'clock? Any thoughts?
Uh, that 6:30 would work better.
6:30 or 3... would 6:30 work for you?
It's going to be my son.
Oh, that's fine.
I'm going to commit for him, sir. He'll be here at 6:30 on the 25th.
Tuesday, the 25th, okay. So that's my motion.
And you want our revised drawings after we talk to the board? Do you want them before this meeting?
Yeah, can you submit your drawings by the 24th? But I'll give you a full week to get them together and even give you a weekend if you need that.
Okay.
So try to get the drawings to us by, let's say, mid-afternoon on... Let's say 4:00 PM on the 24th. At what time is the office closed, is it 4?
Office closes at 4:00.
So would getting them to us by, say, 2:00 be reasonable?
Well...
So then we select a half here that could process it. Is that an adequate time, Dorothy?
It'll have to be.
4:00 is fine.
Or 2:00, that's what I suppose.
If you want it for your meeting, yes, if you have it early.
Now, you're going to put this in a letter that you're going to send to us.
This is just a motion, so if I didn't expect to give formal correspondence for that... No, we haven't voted yet, have we? We just... the motion's on the floor. If you would like some correspondence, you would have the staff send you... Send a note out that the hearing is...
That would be great, that would be wonderful.
So other than that, I have not heard any concerns from anybody. If new information comes in, we'll look at it, but... So I really think the bulk of this review is going to be upon the preservation board to review the architecture and see what changes they want. So, anyway, motion's on the floor. Are we ready to vote?
Do we have a second? Do we...
My second.
Okay. You have another comment, and if you...
Is this... Who is this?
Art Pierce again.
This is Art Pierce again. But we've already let him speak once, and he is not a neighbor. I normally don't mind hearing other ones, but I don't see how this is going to impact my thoughts here.
That's fine, I'm just letting you know.
Any other opinions?
No.
Good.
Okay. All right, well, we have a motion on the floor. I'll vote aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Thank you, and I'm sorry we didn't get to a resolution tonight. We usually try to in one. But I think this will help us get to... In the long run, I think this is a better approach to take. We'll just get all those changes in all at once.
Well, and I appreciate your willing to have a special meeting on our behalf.
Yeah, we don't like people to be out there for a long time, so that's fine. And the historic preservation board, I don't know if they're willing to have a special meeting or not as well. So that's up to them.
Well, I think they're on the agenda... We're on the agenda for the 17th already, so I think we just go there.
You go there.
We have to do for you for that and then come back and see you.
Yeah, that sounds perfect.
But it won't be me.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Well, thank you for having... for the meeting.
Okay. Okay. All right, I think that brings us up to 5 State Street.
Yes, thank you. So I'm just going to have some brief introductory comments. And then my team, Ryan Kelly from Art K, Art K Architecture, and Matt Tomlinson from Marathon Engineering will be addressing most materials this evening.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Just from the faculty's standpoint, we came to this for the conversion of the parking lot of State Street into a courtyard. And we presented the concept, this board provided some valuable feedback. And based on that feedback, we finalized a preliminary site plan and some renderings, which we then presented to the historic preservation board on March 20th for information only to get their feedback. They provided some very valuable feedback that resulted in changes to our design to accommodate their observations and concerns. So we addressed the comments of the historic preservation board against information only. We then met with the village board on Thursday, the 23rd of March. Again, information only, we presented our proposal. We told them about the changes that the historic preservation board had requested. We noted that we are seeking a special permit, and we asked for their comments and input. They had a few questions. And so what we understand the process now is we've completed our site plan, taking everybody's comments into effect. We've presented that and our materials for this meeting. And the team will be going through that site plan in some detail. Our request tonight is for approval, subject to the historic preservation board approval, which we're going to present to them again on April 13... I'm sorry, on April 17. We're also going to meet again with the village board on April 13 to answer their questions. And at that meeting, we're going to request a public hearing. Public hearing that we're going to request would be at their following meeting on April 27. And so hopefully, we'll have that public hearing on the 27th. But it's all subject to this board's approval, historic preservation board's approval, and the village board's comfort with our answers to questions. So we understand there's a whole series. So our request tonight is for your approval, subject to the historic preservation board's approval and the village... and the Village, um, Board's approval of our special permit request, which, again, we understand, won't happen until there's, there's a public hearing on the twenty-seventh. So that's where we are.
Okay.
And, um, our team will now go through in some detail the site plans that we've, we've filed.
All right, thank you. Yeah, so just to go over things tonight, um, there's a lot of various approvals that are before us, that they, we have four or five different things. I wanted to put something out there, first of all, is, um, in our last meeting, we stated we weren't sure what was going to happen with, with environmental review, and since that time, I talked with the building inspector, I talked to our attorney, and at least my opinion at this time is, I'm, I'm gonna propose this be a type-two action under Seeker. Uh, we had a memo that went out to the trustees about three weeks ago about that. I haven't heard a thing from the trustees about that, so I'm hoping they don't disagree with that. Um, but the basic finding here, first of all, is that, um, your patio you're constructing is under four thousand square feet, and you're otherwise remodeling an existing building, and both those are, uh, fall under the type-two list in, in Seeker. So that is my initial findings, I wanted to get that out of the way. You did submit, um, uh, the FEAF, because we weren't sure at the time how we're gonna classify it, but, um, that's one less review that, that needs to be done. Do the board members have any comments about that? Mindy, do you have any comments about that?
No recommendations.
Yeah, no three minutes.
Okay, thank you. So that's, first of all, so, um, the next thing is, um, we have a bunch of reviews, but it'd be great to just go over the plans first, so let's go ahead and have you introduce what's going on. We got, um, we had a review with you before. I think, uh, things we're gonna like to go over a bit are some of the landscaping, the fencing design, lighting, some of those things. We'll get into the nitty-gritty of that, but please, if you wanna start with an introduction, go ahead.
Sounds great, so Ryan Kelly with Art Piers Landscape Architecture for the record. So just, uh, to check out a recap, the application in front of you all tonight is for removal and replacement of an existing parking lot, removal and replacement of an existing curb cut. And as part of that replacement plan, we are proposing an outdoor seating area. And so we have, uh, created an outdoor seating area, and yes, we have added some landscape buffering and some fence buffering. We've met with all the applicable boards, we've received feedback, and some of the changes have been really wall heights and being extremely mindful of our neighboring views and neighboring, uh, historic properties. So some of the changes from the past time, we've connected, we dropped our west wall height down by two feet.
So what is, what's your preference, how do you do that, Walt?
Um, well, that's a great question, so from the inside of the courtyard, um, the approximate height is four feet, and a lot of this is driven because of the grade of the parking lot. So in order to create inviting seating area, uh, we have to also comply with minimum crosswalks. So we have a massive grade drop for the street. We have picked this entire seating area up and essentially leveled it out. And, uh, part of our design challenge is we have three-foot walls as we start off of the building, but as we get closer to the street, they increase in height.
Further from here.
Yeah, the apartment is a bit, so we need, we need a guardrail, we need barriers. We want this to be inviting, public access, but we also want it to be safe. So to answer your question, the west wall starts off at a four-foot height due to adjacent parking lot that we're trying to make this courtyard feel private. But we also want a public appearance as we, um, open up the views to the northeast corner towards State Street. That wall certainly does stair step down, and we are maintaining a three-foot height on the inside of the courtyard. From the outside, that's where we start to get into some of the variances that we've asked for. So variances on the walls, heights are specifically due to that guardrail impact. We can get into the fencing piece as well, we have proposed a fencing application along the east property line. Again, just being mindful of neighboring views, and also just protecting our circulation as well. Landscape buffering, primarily on the street side, so as part of that removal and replacement of the curb cut, we've, uh, had come back in with, uh, we felt, uh, a large alignment with the comprehensive plan, beautiful perennial coverage, an increase in, uh, green space, and we've also applied that toward the courtyard walls on the inside of the walkway. So essentially, we have two layers of native plantings. We haven't had a lot of opportunities for street trees due to the overhead utility corridor, but we have worked in some ornamental trees, um, as we get closer to the courtyard itself.
Okay, um, so you.
Yeah, I can, to the landscape plan, if you wanna.
We have the landscape plan, we, what do people wanna go over first? Do you wanna talk about fences first, do you wanna go landscaping first, or do, or do you wanna continue on with their presentation?
I wouldn't mind continuing on.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, you wanna show some of the, uh, you, you have your, your nice renderings?
So, yeah, exactly, everything we've mentioned here, we've tried to enlarge the renderings just for visual purposes. Wall heights are shown fairly accurately, so as I mentioned on the west, west property line, we are, um, asking for an additional height as we get closer to the building for that parking lot screening, but we've also been working with the Preservation Board on keeping that view shed open to the adjacent historic property. So we felt this was a good balance. We quickly stair stepped that down to the, um, to the allowable height on the inside of the courtyard, which is a three-foot guardrail, which protects our patrons and customers at the seating areas. What's not shown is our landscape application, um, this is conceptual in nature, but everything I just mentioned, where we're showing lawn in the renderings, those would be solid buffering with, um, with perennial material, hardy, hardy shrubs and, and brown covers.
Would, would you mind just putting, lifting that up?
Yeah. Great.
Um, so in the back there, we're looking at the wall here, and so that one, I see the, the top of the wall is at a hundred and seven feet, bottom of the wall is a hundred and two feet. So that's five foot high approximately, uh, from the outside, correct?
From the outside, correct.
And then the inside, you said it's about four?
Correct, give or take, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're, um, so again, raising this patio, um, we, our outcome is to have a flush walkout. So right now, it's a step down from the main entry, and so it's not conforming with any kind of accessibility. So our outcome is to raise that, have a flush walkout, and it's pretty accessible from, from the street side. All improvements shown are within our property boundaries, um, with the caveat of the right-of-way for the curb cut removal or fixment.
Okay, oh, even the little tree you're planting there, that's on your property?
Um, that is, it's very close to our property line, as you know, uh, the property line along State Street does angle, but the tree itself, yes, is on our property side.
Yeah, I, I think the property line is stepped back like fifteen feet from the sidewalk or something like that.
That's the DOT right-of-way, yeah, but the pro, actual property line is about eighteen inches off the sidewalk. Yeah, so we have a unique DOT right-of-way, and our engineering team will speak more intelligently to that than I can.
There's a, there's a, Matt Tomlinson, Marathon, there's a reserved taking by the DOT that was never executed or filed, so the right-of-way appears to still be there, while there's a reservation for right-of-way. So we've gotten a copy to abstract from the building owner, and we're finalizing that survey piece, uh, as we speak. We, um, interesting. Do you folks get minutes from the Historic Preservation Board?
We do not, um, I tried reaching out to them, to some of the members of the board for some comments, and I, I only, I have heard essentially nothing from them.
Okay, so I, I didn't have a time, but I know Ryan and Chuck did, and I think maybe it'd be helpful, some of the changes they've requested and, and input on the materials here, so you guys can understand what their feedback was as well.
Do you wanna do the, the landscaping first? And landscaping and lighting first, and then get back to that, or do we wanna just go right into that?
I, I think it ties in together with some of the heights of the pillars and fence and some of the landscaping, so maybe it'd be helpful that Ryan walk it through.
Okay.
I started with just the wall heights, so wall heights were absolutely common. We addressed those to the best of our ability with safety in mind. Um, the other comment was, were just human scale, though these two main front pillars, we were really trying to frame in this entry, um, some of the feedback was to scale that down, so that's what we really took that into consideration. So all pillars shown will be matching materials, um, and then these will be, we, um, you know, have the heights memorized, but we basically dropped those from seven feet down to four and a half or five feet. Was that, one, oh, six, one, yeah, four feet, over four feet. So these are much, uh, more human scale, but at the same time, it creates a welcoming portal, and trying to find that balance with our clients', um, branding standards with their licensing agreement, and also conform with the village's character. Any questions on any of the art scheme changes?
Yeah, well, you, so you changed the pillars, and then you changed the height, you lowered the height of the walls from eight feet down to five feet.
Correct, um, specifically this west wall. The interior walls, as we hit around the ramp, and then also on the east side, those have been, um, at our minimum standard from the beginning, so not a lot of changes there.
Um, so just so we're listening, Steve, um, the max height permitted is three feet, is that correct?
Oh, but, I mean, wood structure or, or runner in a courtyard, you have the authority of the board, we're not wood to approve. Something other than wood or runner.
So a masonry wall or fence, it's, it's not exactly clear on the definition of that.
The, uh, masonry fence, I, I find, I find it pretty comical.
Yeah.
I call it a wall.
You have, you have the discretion, but one, one thing that you don't have the discretion, that you and I discussed earlier, we showed a wood wall, six foot tall, on the, you know, the side of the bakery. There is no, no, nothing that would approach a lot of that. It wasn't very entering in the fence code, so that, that's one thing we have to change on this.
We did drop that down to a five, a sixty-inch height.
Actually, three foot, the front, or cannot be five, actually, three foot.
And there's no variance.
No variance out of the fence, well, under wood, now if you were to do there's a masonry wall again, that would be up to this point. And, and be honest with you, given the conditions of the doubt is there, that you know it's them.
Right.
Something more substantial would be more protected to the public than a three foot or something wood. I guarantee if it was wood, somebody is going to destroy it.
Yes, I, I took a look at that side, um, let me see if my notes were. So, Steve, as, as you know, have noticed in the past, cars hit a lot of things over in that area, that's, so the wall, wall barriers make a lot of sense to me personally, but, um, so can you explain a little bit about some of your observations of what's gone on over there over time?
Is, is, well, car doing that area is a problem, is the same problem as I can hear, or is the problem probably way before I was here? Just as if it's decided with the, the turning radius of parking lot or the sidewalk, is it a substandard arch area?
Okay, all right, well, maybe I'm getting a little bit off course here, especially just what you, you guys.
We've been having needed, uh, a request for that, as far as in our initial application to the board, if there isn't an option for variance to be granted because the quote concludes it, we can have a brief discussion and check with the board about options to.
Yeah, we may want to have a discussion with our attorney as well about that, um, that, that she's, um, anyway, we'll get there, but let's, let's leave that fence here for a later discussion. Let's, I guess, kinda get through some of our introduction here. So you're showing this view, I found these 3D renderings to be extremely helpful, by the way, so thank you for making those. Because the drawings didn't, um, really clearly show the height of the walls in illustrations, so this is very helpful to see. Um, it, it really helps get a grasp on this, so thank you for doing that.
How about materials, Ryan, you wanna just talk, any feedback, we're doing cobbles, some different wall materials, maybe as well, through those?
We, uh, so, uh, our materials are well received at the HPV, obviously, we're, we're providing samples before that next meeting. Out on site, we're doing some knockups, but we found, um, well, we're really just really calling our client's vision, having that authentic European courtyard feel, we found, um, some reclaimed granite cobbles, and we'll have samples of those, um, obviously, that's, uh, natural material, and it really works well here. The same thing with, uh, the concrete block we're using for the walls, it'll be a split piece look to really, um, be a transitional piece to the architecture. Capping is all natural stone, step things, all of our stairs shown are all natural, and then for our benches.
They're natural stone steps or the concrete?
They're all natural stone capping, yeah, Indiana limestone throughout, so that'll be a light color, we have some great imagery of it on our, um, site plan here.
So, um, so none of the patio, the surface is, is actually paved, it's all, uh, natural stone and granite.
Correct.
Oh, that's, uh, that's.
Yes, we have reclaimed, um, granite cobblestone shown here in the top left image, um, which is reclaimed from the northeast, we're pretty excited about that. Um, and then here's a complimentary material for our wall block, natural stone capping. Um, we have a few boulders proposed in the landscape area on our property line side, um, which are also natural. And then we get into the cedar piece, so cedar benching, and we're really trying to match up our benching with our fencing, with our signage, uh, on the building as well, so that would all be consistent. And so we can come back to the fencing part, but I just, I thought that was important, too.
Okay, um, normally, we don't get, um, into all the details and materials, but we may sometimes share our personal preferences, and I know it's come up before that, uh, that we've suggested to people use natural stone instead of pavers, uh, it looked, where it's way better over time.
Absolutely, and it really just ties into the.
Sounds exciting.
Yeah.
Any other comments on that?
So the other point, I'd just like to remind the, uh, the board that we mentioned in that concept, uh, but there will be radiant heating underneath these cobbles, so stone removal is not gonna be a problem because the stone will melt as it hits the, the cobble, so that's, that's a significant investment that we're making, but we think it'll make it a year-round patio that can be used by, by our customers.
Um, now tell me, is that, um, are the stones going to be sand in between them, or are they gonna be hard mortared?
Mortared, yes, we're also thinking about, uh, ADA compliance, and we have accessibility from the street currently shown. We're also working with the supplier to do a hammering effect on the, cobblestones can be a little jagged, but we are working to be compliant from an accessibility standpoint. Those will be mortared and flush, and then we'll have a radiant heat system underneath that really provides that thermal piece and, and effectiveness.
Okay, so what I'm getting at, is this gonna be completely impervious slab, it's not gonna have drainage between the stones that absorbs part of the water? Okay.
Yep. Correct.
Um, and I think I noted that, um, you have pitched it all towards that telephone pole, uh, in the front, and there's an existing drain there that, that can accept the water, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, Steve, had, had you looked anything at the drainage yet?
Yeah, I mean, the, the way they've got it, they've got a pitch or going to a drain which is utilized from the other part, not now anyways, and from the street, so.
We're, uh, we're marginally, and I know it's one of your site plan considerations for granting, but we're marginally increasing green space on the property, right now, it's a hundred percent, we're going to ninety-five percent, so we are adding with some of the landscape beds, and that does provide some reduction in stormwater, although it's, it's minimal, just given the limited space that we have.
Yeah, that is a site that is in dire need of some landscaping, so thank you for that, that's gonna be a big improvement. Do you have your landscaping plan that you wanna show a little bit?
Sure. So, as mentioned before, you can see the property line here in dark, dashed, uh, which is a couple feet, it goes in at an angle from Village Bakery's entry toward, um, the adjacent west property, but we have a couple feet here. We are showing, um, a connection to the, uh, public walkway, um, and really starting at the building face and working out, we've added some soft scape up against the building, um, currently is a complete concrete pad now, that concrete pad comes out.
So this is currently a sidewalk?
Correct.
And you're converting the sidewalk into a planting bed?
Correct.
So that's part of your five percent landscaping you're getting there?
Our, our percentage is within the property boundary, not including the.
Exactly, way up there, yes.
Yeah, exactly right.
Okay.
So we have green space here against the building, perennial color and some, uh, evergreen, just has some winter interest. And as we get out towards the street, as I mentioned earlier, we have an ornamental tree proposed here in a mixture of, uh, ground cover, um, it's really a four-season palette from, uh, from the facing wall towards street. And we have evergreen, um, we have spring, summer, fall color, uh, red bud tree, um, all very urban tolerant, salt tolerant, pretty proof, so we're very mindful of durability.
And you also have power lines right over that tree, so I presume that went into, we talked about maybe getting a full-size tree. talked about maybe getting a full size tree there, but you have power lines right over it.
Correct.
So I assume that went into your decision making.
Hundred percent, so we're huge advocates of increasing stem count. We have an existing tree closer to the Village Bakery entry that we're preserving, obviously we're preserving, it's, it's not on our property, but then we have that massive utility corridor, so we're maxing that vertical height out without, without having this tree get cut down by, or impacted in five to seven years. But it's the right tree, right space, and it will not outgrow the utility corridor. And then we're really trying to bury the telephone pole and make this view go away, so we've added a significant amount of ornamental grasses, a little bit of green buffering from this parking, and before we pick up our fencing here, oh, sorry, here.
Yeah, I guess, you said aside there, that telephone pole is quite the prominent feature.
We would really like to soften that view, that's, that was a goal, let's put it that way. But we have some great swiftgrass proposed, which, you know, those, they don't really get unruly, they'll be in the forty-two inch height, great summer color, great fall color, and are pretty manageable. We've also added, obviously, that we have ballards that have been dinged up over the years, we replaced those with those Seneca boulders I showed you earlier, which are just fantastic, rectangular, act as a good traffic calming device, we have utilities that don't need to be touched.
Okay, just a question, you're talking about all the grasses in here, in your opinion, are any of this vegetation likely to impact views of the sidewalk from exiting cars?
No, so that's a great question. We've, we've actually taken a hard look at the visibility triangle, so we, keep in mind, we do have an existing tree in the right of way, so everything really within that site vis would be lower than knee height. So we have prairie dropsy as a border, and then we have daylilies as a frontal.
You're concerned about cars, we're concerned about pedestrians. Welcome to the village. So I'm concerned about the sidewalk, if you had a car accident, it just slows down traffic and people cross the street again.
Well, I think that's our outcome, all along with pedestrian invocability, but no, we're not concerned with that, it's, all this will be visible from, but we also have cyclists too, and that's really what we're trying to protect, and what I was going to say about the fencing earlier, that really acts as a protection barrier for, for our patrons, cyclists and pedestrians walking in, this will be a main entry, this is a slope, but really no, we don't have any concerns with vehicular traffic. Everything toward the street will be low.
So this view right here, so if someone's pushing a stroller here, you don't, you're not concerned about sightlines of seeing the stroller from?
Not anymore than it is now, and we have, we have raised planters that are currently here now, that would be, I mean, it's essentially the same, there's raised planters with plant material in them, it would be, it's essentially a replacement.
Yeah, those are, those are knee high, so they're not a big deal. Okay. And the same thing with fences for some of the sightlines, you had a little fence here, and that was a metal fence?
So that would be our handrail for the ADA ramp, yep, so that would be adaptive, black aluminum, we're, we're working through those details, but we're essentially emulating what's shown in the renderings. We're, as part of the drain we talked about earlier, we, in order to have ADA work from the street side, we really needed to pitch that a certain, two, maximum two percent. We, we have this all working, and we'll have handrails on both sides.
Okay, but again, visibility of the pedestrians that fill in on the sidewalk for cars exiting there, is that, that fence three feet or three and a half feet approximately high?
That will be, it'll be ADA minimum, which is, I believe it's forty-two.
Okay, so ADA requires it to be forty-two.
I mean, it's, it's, I'm pretty sure it's forty-two. I could be wrong in that, but we'll double check, it'll be thirty-six or forty, thirty-six minimum for sure.
Well, that's interesting, because Steve said we, our maximum height is permitted on a typical fence, if you call it a railing and not a fence, maybe that changes things a little bit.
It is a railing, and it's, and it's like ADA code requirement, so whatever that.
Okay, so if we call it a railing and don't call it a fence, then we get out of the fence code?
And it's only on the accessible path, that's required, we're not trying to extend it any further than that.
Is Steve around?
Checking something in the code.
Checking out things.
To answer your question about visibility, this will be, this will be picket style, not a solid panel fence, very much, if you can show you.
I was just going to say that I've had problems with wooden picket fences, that do have gaps in between them with visibility at corners and intersections there, but these are substantially smaller than wooden pickets.
Exactly.
And if a car was to back up into them, how would that fare?
I'm sure I will not be too thrilled about that, but benefit for us, what's not shown in the renderings, we have, there's another raised planter on our adjacent property with small boulders that really acts as another guardrail, so we have, we have a pretty good layer here as well.
Okay, so, because I know that there's the other parking lot there, and the problem with both these parking lots is they're narrower than recommended.
Correct.
So cars backing up into them is common, particularly on the other side. This side, I think I looked it up and it was like forty feet long, which is getting closer to what's allowed, and so that side might be less of a problem, and the other side, I think, was more like thirty-six feet, so that's even shorter, so that's going to be a bigger problem on the other side. But there's a parking spot directly opposite that railing, and I believe, right over there.
Yeah.
So if they're backing up and they happen to not see this, they're, you say they're going to hit a rock before they hit the fence, correct?
We, you can see it actually on the site plan, yellow line for, it's actually almost seventy feet, for, we have a pretty good buffer on the side of that railing, which we will not be touching, it's not on our property, we'll preserve all of that in place. And then the ramp comes in right behind us. I don't have a good photo of that, but they're, they're, they're not, they're not boulders, but they're small cobbles, and it's basically been, it's a natural stone raised planter that's been there for years.
Okay, so basically, if your car backs up, it'll hit the wheels and not destroy the, not be a curb stop, but not destroy the car?
Correct. Just that it's not on our property.
Okay, it's not on your property, okay. But now that's that fence that you showed, so Steve, the question for you is, are you going to declare this metal railing there a railing instead of a fence?
So long ADA paths.
So they say the height there is forty-two inches, and it's a ADA compliant, again, if that was a fence, we're limited to three foot in height, so I just was interested in your interpretation, if you need time to think about it, by all means, what they say that for a ramp, some type of guardrail.
The first question is, if it's a thirty-six inch high rail, means ADA guidelines?
Yes.
If it does, then we'll make it thirty-six inches and be co-compliant, we would just.
Or forty-two, or whatever, whatever it is.
The minimum requirement by ADA, that's what we'll make it.
I don't know what that is, so.
You can go about the three foot in front area, I'm there a while, like I said, so you go to.
Well, it's a question of the ADA rail requirement, you have to have a handrail on it.
Correct.
So any ramp that doesn't have a handrail by default is a problem, so.
Yeah, and there's one thing I guess I have to look when I code, you know, I mean, I don't know what supersedes our code.
Well, I guess if it's not a fence and it's a railing, then.
A railing, what's railing attached to?
Be attached to the wall, which would be thirty-six.
Yeah.
It'd be post-mounted for the.
If it's just a railing attached to the wall, you know, I mean, you would only be on the ramp, we're not extending it any further. Oh, okay, yeah, it could be whatever height you want it, but it has to be within that thirty-six inch, thirty-four, thirty-six inch center.
I think it's thirty-six.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're, so you're going to consider it a railing, needs to be approximately thirty-six inch height, and you two can work out any details on that.
Absolutely.
I don't see any concerns, anyone?
Nope.
Okay. All right, so that was that, and we talked.
Google is very handy, thirty-four to thirty-eight inches is the requirement, will be thirty-six inches with a handrail compliant with ADA.
Okay.
So. It's a, oh, God, great question.
Okay, well, all right, we're trying to, trying to get through this, it's, you did a lot of work on this, by the way, so thank you for everything on your application. That's, we don't often get nice renderings like that, so it's always pleasant when someone takes the time for that. So we were talking about landscaping, how about we move to lighting?
Sure.
Okay, so you had a few different fixtures, so you had these little posts, little landscaping posts that are going in here, and they're what, two and a half feet tall or something like that?
Maybe an eighteen inch stem.
Okay, eighteen inch, okay, so roughly knee height then?
Correct.
And those are going in over here, correct?
Red dots, yep, those, and that intent is just to have some foot candles, so we have an existing, we have not performed a lighting study, just to, for the record, we have an existing street light that is northwest corner of our property, and just a reminder, this is not a nighttime use, it's currently not a nighttime use, and it is, will not be a nighttime use. Our intent was to have foot candles on as much of hard surface as possible, red dots are path lights on our property side, that would be within the landscape area, and shed light adjacent to the public walkway for safety. Magenta symbols are under cap lights, which are shown here, those have about a six foot spread or down facing, you know, that's very important to the village. And then we have a third light shown as a pillar cap light, which are just, there's two of those, which would be on our two main pillars, and that will cast down based on the hood.
Okay, so first of all, these lights, so these are all going atop the walls, correct?
No, those would be actually installed under, they're under cap lights, so they would be, it's underneath the cap, and it would be a wall wash down toward the ground, so you would not see them. So they, they tuck in right underneath the cap, cap goes over and has a little bit of an overhang, and then they shine down the wall.
And they shine down on the wall, and these are, these are all pretty low intensity?
Correct, all twelve volt, everything shown is low voltage, so provided a little bit of ambiance, a little bit of safety, but it should be well within dark skies ordinance.
Okay, so the two things we often think about for lighting is, for commercial property like this, you want to make sure public safety is accommodated, so people can walk without any concerns, and then we don't want excessive light spillage onto other properties, is the other thing we want, we don't want very glare. So these are pointing down, they're below head height, and they're on the walls, and they're aimed at the wall, so that sounds nice to me, and then the knee high ones, those are again, not very bright, and I don't see any concerns with those. Any other opinions?
Nope.
You're making it very inviting to go for a walk after dark and have a place to sit down.
But they'll be closed.
Well, that's, so is there, will it be gated or will it be open or?
We talked about keeping it open, and yeah, we, we, we looked at that early on and just, we really wanted to keep that, we've talked about that balance of having it a private space, but public facing, and we felt gates would really deter that, so, and there was just really no, we really liked the idea of having tiered seating that could be kind of public facing, and there was really just no great way to secure that off, so it, it works, I mean, it's a parking lot now, it's secure, and we're, we're really not concerned with it, yeah. But we thought this would help.
And then the other two lights are here, and these are ones that actually look kind of bright, they're the only ones I, I had questions about.
It's a great question, yeah, so no, we would actually, if there's a conversion kit, we would have that on, everything would be on a low voltage system, and we'll control that too, it'll all be on a twelve volt system, so it will not be one-twenty voltage, not, it will not be bright.
Okay, well, what I saw is it looked like these had four bulbs in here, and I don't know if they're recessed in the caps, or if the bulbs are, are projecting the street out sideways.
That, well, the way we understand it is, it's cap mounted and it's more of a down, we started specifically for, because we knew the village would not be okay with uplighting, so yeah, that, that's the, the intent, and I can double check that though.
And so you, do you have anything on the, how much light these are outputting?
Everything's in, we have everything in the specs for offset, I don't have to memorize off the cuff.
Okay, it says twelve volts, four bulbs, we just don't know how bright these bulbs are, but if it's twelve volts, they're not that bright.
Right, so everything twelve volt would comply with dark skies, and so I don't, I'm not, I don't know the lumens off the cuff, but I mean, if that's something that's a concern, we can certainly provide that information.
Well, I, I mean, if there are four hundred watt bulbs, and that's usually kind of bright, if they're four, ten watt bulbs, they're not that bright, and so I guess the only commentary that I would have is usually in our code, that usually, without going into details, at least in residential, and it makes sense here, it's usually if you're somewhere around seventy-five watt equivalent, that's fine, and I think the rationale behind that is there's minimal light broadcast more than ten or fifteen feet that way.
That makes sense.
So if you're ten feet from the property line, and it's somewhere around seventy-five watt equivalent, or there about, it's not going to be anything offensive, and that's just kind of where I'm thinking in the ballpark. If you think you're in that ballpark, then that's.
I can tell you for certainty, I mean, the sixty, eighty, one hundred watt bulbs, that's for high voltage, twelve, twelve volt systems, I'm not an electrician, the diameter on the path lights is roughly sixty, we have landscape behind that, which will shield that, and it's really similar for the pillar cap lights as well, it's more of an eight foot radius.
Eight foot radius, approximately?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so, all right. Well, that's, that's good to know.
And then keep in mind, we do have existing building lighting, it's there today, we were looking to upgrade those, the fixtures are shown in our renderings here, so.
So you are replacing those, I thought the original plan was to keep them, but, okay. I see minimal concern on our part if they're pointing at the building, and they're just lighting up the sign, that's, I have no concern about that.
So that's really where we pick up the bookhand, as I misspoke on that, our architecture team's not here today, they're present, and they were working on the interior, helped us with the renderings, we did decide to keep these in place, they're in good shape, and those will not be, you're correct.
Okay.
But that's really how we designed this lighting system, knowing we have hotspots and heartkeeper is, as we get closer to the building.
And there's a, there's a pole light here, right?
I, we, this does not actually have a light on it, so which, again, was why we added a few path lights, just to have a little bit of a sense of security. We have an existing pole light here, which provides ample lighting for this entire corner, and then we've, we've also added some foot candles on that, stops themselves for, just to avoid tripping.
Okay. All right, well, you've, you've put a lot of thought into your design.
Three questions. Any other questions or concerns that I can open?
Let's see, what have we gone over, we've gone over landscaping, we've gone over lighting, we've talked about the walls, we may get back into the walls.
We go to the renderings.
So the rendering things, they're not much different than the ones that you have.
We have a couple, so we have an architectural, that's my building, we have a couple that you showed, if you wanted to revisit the fence conversation.
Yeah, so there is a fence over here.
Correct.
Separating you from the parking lot for the bakery.
That was the intent, yep, that was for safety consideration.
And that was what's currently listed as a six foot wood fence, I believe.
Down this six.
Where is that in the plan?
One hook, I think it's on the section, actually.
Okay.
Five watt, three minutes.
It should be a four on board. So this is that.
So this.
It shows six foot height.
So we, we had switched that on the latest site plan and didn't pick it up on the detail, so.
So anyway, so you have this wooden fence over on that side, and you, I think it showed, where do we see that?
So that would be on the east property line, that starts, I can show you, so let's pull this closer. So this is the site plan again, so that really, so we have a landscape, we have a landscape buffer here, utility pole, this is all landscape.
No fence.
No fence.
Okay.
And again, we have that DOT delineation that cuts across here, so we start here on our property, inside our property line, it goes through here, it breaks here, and then it.
So it's completely open here, okay.
It's completely open, so it's a section of fence here, that, that'll store stuff, right, so we have to keep in mind, this is all. Right, so we have to keep in mind, this is all pitching toward the street. So this'll stair step. There will be an entry break here. I think that's six, five or six feet. And then we're going to pick it up here again, able to...
And this is the depiction of the fencing.
The same colors would match. That would be the only difference. What we do on the benching, we want it to match on the fencing and then the signage.
So this is that higher fence. And then we have around here, this is essentially the same?
This is all the same. It'll be all the same height. The only difference, it'll be, it'll stair step with the grade. What's the difference?
Yeah, rendering five of six in the two eleven, two and a half by eleven. In this document here, five of six. Rendering five of six to back up.
Is this a little gate in here?
Say that again. Uh, no gate.
It'll take you to have this completely enclosed here.
Look at this picture here.
Okay.
And then five of six here. I'm sorry, it's, it might be six of six. Yeah, six of six.
You're proven, this is a good view.
So there's...
Oh, there, you found it too.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's a couple considerations for this fence here. One is, we've got bike parking on the other side. And I think anyone that knows the Village Bakery customers, they frequently back into the poles they're currently there. I mean, those poles have taken...
It's taken away where that fence is at. This fence is going to get hit a few times.
So my biggest concern is the safety of the bicycles. And we wanted fencing to protect the bicycles. But if we can't go, if we're limited to three feet, then that's not going to work. I'm going to have to build a wall. And so we will need to build a wall there because three-foot fencing is not going to protect bicycles. You know, the car is backing into that. We're going to have vertical bike racks. And I can't afford to have somebody back into that and destroy $10,000 bikes. I mean, there's going to be a lot of serious cyclists with very expensive bikes on those racks. And so if we're limited to, you know, a dinky three-foot fence, then we're going to have to modify our design and put in a wall. That's the only way I'm going to be able to protect my customers' equipment.
So just so you know here, the distance from that fence to the end of the parking lot here, I believe is about 36 feet. And code normally requires about 42 to 44 feet. So that parking lot is six to eight feet narrower than is required for safety or thereabouts. It sounds like you're nodding, you're in agreement with that. So cars are backing out into a parking lot that's too narrow. So I think it's a certainty it's going to get hit on occasion, maybe daily for all I know. I don't know. It all depends on what goes on over there. But we know that those existing poles and boulders have been hit a lot. But I just wanted to mention that the other side is a little longer of a distance. So as far as people backing up into it, I think I have the greatest concern here. So we'll get into materials. You did make a pretty solid fence though. You put like four-by-four posts.
Exactly, right. Yeah, and then I mean, part of that is, is also, we know it's going to get hit at some point and this would be a more effective cost solution too for repair. And so walls are very expensive, very hard to deal with. And we've talked about this from the beginning. We know both parking lots are non-conforming and just are not safe and don't work that well. But the reality is, it's on our property side and we want it to be safe and we want it to be economical to repair. So that's important to us, yeah.
Okay. So everyone, I think, understands what's going on over there?
So do I understand though, that that fence protecting the bicycles is going to be limited to three feet?
Maybe we should ask Mindy about that. What was your, so the whole issue we had with the zoning code, fences are not in the zoning code. And they have provisions in there for non-wood fences over 36 inches. Did you have an opinion on that?
I do have an opinion about this and some other legal issues that have come up in this application. But I think they'd be more thoroughly discussed in the return appliance session.
Okay.
Than in a public session.
Okay, well, thank you. We'll do that. So it sounds like that we'll have to get back to you on that. Taylor?
We haven't talked about handicap parking. This quota shows a car here in an area that has been designated as...
Well, that's on the other property.
That's on our property. Yeah, so we would not have any parking.
That whole handicap parking spot thing, that was right here. That's what we've heard a little bit about, right?
Not conforming though. So the finish forward is six inches higher than the parking spot. And so our intent is to have no parking, which would be looking at eliminated.
Okay, so all the parking spots you're removing are 100% on your property?
Correct.
You're not altering the other properties at all, other than maybe an appendage from the right away?
It's 100% off, correct. Existing ADA spot here in Village Bakery property. Our property line is here. The walkway actually goes across our property line here. And we are demoing from property line all the way down within this box. So you can see that gray dashed line is our limited disturbance.
So this outline here, well, this is the property boundary.
This is our property boundary.
And this is, the fence is going to go there?
Nope.
Or the fence is going here?
Yeah, we were very mindful of...
So you're giving them three feet or something like that?
Yeah, more than they really like said.
And hopefully they stroll into your place.
The entry break will be a little earlier, but we're really looking to stay within our property boundary. So asphalt from this point all the way up here is removed. This is all asphalt today. This is all concrete, which is a step up. So this would be a step up to finish floor.
Again, this is your existing drain and the whole system is pitched to over to the back.
It's one foot, two foot, three foot. But these are half-foot contours. We're about three and a half feet drop to this point.
Oh, I didn't realize it was added just for the drop.
Yeah, it's pretty steep, which is also again, why we're asking for the variances on the walls. This is better to picture too. You can see the raised planters and then the adjacent raised planter that I was mentioning earlier.
Over there, okay.
Yep.
Yep. Justin, I've...
Go ahead.
So on the corner seating, what's the drop from the, from the bottom to the sidewalk?
Yeah, so this, so we actually have two 15-inch benches. So we're, so it's 30 inches total.
So it's 15 inches with your chair, right?
Yeah, and then the treads will be 18 inches wide. So we have three feet of bench, two 18-inch seats that are 15-inch high.
So it's from the sidewalk to the first level, that's 15 inches, 18 inches?
Correct, 15, yep. It varies depending on, again, the walkway. Is that, generally speaking, it's 12 to 15 inches depending on where you are.
Right.
You have from the highest corner, maybe about 15.
So I'm just, you know, that's, could be, I think that's a little high. And also the steps, those wonderful steps that you have going up, I was wondering if, kind of to mimic those a little bit, if another step could be added to the bottom, just to make that... I see somebody coming up the street and entering not from the steps, but over the seating.
That makes sense. I mean, the intent is specifically for seating. We have two points of access in the main entry and then on the side. But we've been very much intending that as seating and really trying to open up that view shot.
Right.
If I can interject, we don't want to add a smaller step to make it look like a staircase. We want it to be seating. So we can't stop anybody from taking a big step or jumping over it, that kind of thing. So we don't want to make it look like a staircase where people do start going in the wrong direction.
Right, but I'm also thinking people, you know, taking a step all the way to the sidewalk.
It won't really be a path of travel. It's merely intended for folks to walk along the sidewalk and sit down on it if they so choose. A normal seating wall height, a chair is usually 16 inches. So it's about the height of a chair roughly. And it would be very conducive to seating as folks...
No, I get the seating part. It's just the step if somebody is stepping, stepping off of it.
Oh, you mean stepping off the higher seat?
Or the bottom one.
Or the corner.
Or the corner.
Somehow you have to, you'd have to show that it's not steps. You have to define not steps because what you're saying is right. Somebody will walk down and that steps are going to be expecting a regular step and that's when you fall in your face.
Well, you've differentiated the material, right? Then the step one, so that's a cedar, that's going to be very much a cedar finish. It's a totally foreign material compared to the cobblestone surface and the other stairs. That's a pretty kind of detail where it is, we're under 30-inch compliance. We're, from a consultant standpoint and engineer's standpoint, we're very confident with the compliance of it. But I totally respect the comment and concern. We very much intend that as seating.
We'll chuck along, you all have enough these years and stuff.
No one is writing like that.
You can get a little sign there or a little audio thing that, "Get off my lawn", if someone walks down there.
Is your question more as folks are on the courtyard going out? Maybe Ryan would talk about, is there differentiation, elevation from the courtyard to those?
Right.
Maybe that'll answer the question.
Oh, sorry, meaning if it's raised up a little bit, a top step above the courtyard?
No.
Do we have a section through that?
We don't have a section, but the courtyard is flush with this top step that gets us to courtyard elevation. We will have, I mean, the cobblestone and cedar, I mean, just visually, it's two very different materials. You're going from a little bit of rubble texture to a very smooth wood plank. But then, yeah, I mean, we're going to have, we're going to have a seat bench drop two times. But the width of those also is three times the normal tread. Or not three times, I'm sorry, one and a half times.
Right, so, yeah, it's not the width. So if somebody is sitting there and now they're getting up to leave, they can't come off the front? They...
I mean, we feel that's very manageable to get off the front. I mean, it's the same as sitting on a tiered stool bench. It's step down, step down. But if you're, yeah, I think we can, we can consider other opportunities. We felt that was a sound seating opportunity.
Yeah, my concern is if we lower the heights, now everyone's going to use it as a staircase. And I don't want that. I want this to be the entrance to the courtyard. And so creating a visual that makes it look like a staircase is the worst thing I can...
You have a staircase there, which is a staircase. That clearly is a feature, not a staircase. I was thinking you were talking about the actual step, but that east to the left there is purely a feature. I mean, that's, you know, kids can climb on anything. And if you go around the village, there's many other sites that have, you know, something similar to that. You go to St. Louis where there are knee-walks. You know, I'm like saying, you know, you'd have to put a second thing down there if somebody might climb on it. Somebody might climb on it. That's just reality.
And also, we are providing an awful lot of seating through the courtyard. I would anticipate that if someone is going to have a mobility issue that might keep them from judging their step properly, that won't be their option to sit. It'll be at a table at one of the seat walls interior of the courtyard. So I think there's enough opportunity and variety in design here where I don't anticipate that becoming a problem.
It's like a bleacher seat.
Yeah.
Very much a bleacher seat. Okay, well, let's not get hung up on that one detail. Are you satisfied that you understand what's going on, Susan?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sure that Susan's point will also be raised by my insurance agent.
Okay. Let's, take a look here with some of the other... One of our typical issues. The area between the sidewalk and the street. You are basically removing a driveway apron and you're putting in some landscaping beds and a walkway.
Correct.
Okay, I was curious as to, well, I guess if that's DOT and the trustees, I guess that's their ballpark, because that's all in there right away.
Correct.
So, okay, but you're not concerned about the feasibility of getting that done, correct?
The feedback so far has been positive in response. DOT, we didn't move jurisdiction, did we?
No, yeah, so we've worked with Steve on that, but I don't anticipate any issues. DOT is always interested in moving driveways that are close to an intersection we have with Main Street and State Street.
Okay.
We anticipate that they will prefer that improvement.
So we did get some response back from county planning and you actually addressed some of their responses in your application. But they didn't seem like they had any concerns also. It also didn't sound like DOT really took a hard look at it yet. Steve, did you have any thoughts about county planning response or any of this work in the right away?
Well, they, I mean, Monroe County had really very little to say. They recommended getting hold of DOT, which they have in regards to that. I may not sniff. We'll get to it from its system.
Okay. It'll look a heck of a lot nicer than it does now.
Oh, yeah.
It'll look a lot nicer than it does now.
Yep, whole place.
Okay, as far as utilities go, there's no change in utilities. So no new water lines, no new power lines, no drainage lines, nothing, correct?
Drainage, we do have subsurface drainage. We have to, just to manage sheet flow. So we have impervious coverage on our patio. We have added, we have added subsurface drainage. But we've also added some green infrastructure in the landscape paths.
But related to your site plan approval conditions, the discharge point being the existing drain, the corner that you mentioned earlier. Same connection point, no changes to the service to the street, anything else. We're just providing a little dark situation then.
Yeah, so you said you're directing all the flow to the existing drain? Okay, that's funny. Let's get to one other interesting topic, trash management. We've heard a little discussion about what's going on with trash. So first of all, there's a dumpster in the back corner of the property. Dumpster is over there. And you have permission to use that, or at least that's your, what, some of the discussions that we've heard, that there's an easement to allow you to use that and that's your planned use. And you have a few trash facilities presumably scattered about? Or is it all going to be service and a waitstaff that's going to take care of that?
Yes, correct. There's a new waitstaff. So the way the restaurant model works is first of all, we have very little disposable. Everything will be on crockery and washed with an industrial dishwasher machine inside the building. We're not going to go paper, even the mugs. I did bring for this board, but for the historic preservation board and the village board, I showed that there's custom mugs for every type of coffee. And so we are not going to be a paper takeaway, heavy trash type restaurant. Where is the type of restaurant where you come, you sit down, you eat, the coffee's brought to you on wood platters with a mug and you drink it. And when you're done, it gets removed by the server. You will go into the restaurant to order, but once you order at the counter, you'll be seated, you'll have a number at your table. The waitstaff will bring you your food on plates. There'll be water bottles, like cycling water bottles with metal utensils in them that you will use to eat. That will be taken away by the servers. So it's going to be a very, very low trash environment, which quite frankly, I think is great from a sustainability standpoint. And so we anticipate very low trash. In fact, one in Gerona doesn't have a trash bin. And so they gather their trash in a couple of bags every evening and they just cart them out and take them... And so they gather their trash in a couple of bags every evening and they just cart them out and take them to a dumpster where they have a break. So it's going to be very, very low trash. We do have, there are two dumpsters on the Village Bakery property. Mike Reynolds, the owner of the building that I'll be leasing, has shared with me that there is a very clear easement. And his attorney has pointed out that Starbucks used one of those dumpsters when Starbucks was there. Rachel's used one of those dumpsters when Rachel's was there, and I would use that same dumpster. And so I paid for one of the dumpsters removal and Village Bakery pays for the other. Now, I understand the owner of Village Bakery has raised a dispute on this matter, which I find amusing because for the last however many years, you know, 30 years, there's, it's, it's been agreed that those are in place. But if, if there's a dispute, we'll find an alternative way of removing our three bags every evening. It's not a major deal. But Mike Reynolds has assured me that his lawyers have looked at the easement. It's a very clear easement. So I'm anticipating, you know, issues when this, when this is said and done. But like I said, in the interim, if something happens, we're planning to, Lord willing, with approvals open in, in mid-August, when we open in mid-August, we'll, we'll have a solution in place for our modest trash every evening.
Yeah, so Steve, there are a description that prior businesses had no issues with trash there. Does that reflect your understanding? Prior businesses in that location, so they're saying they all had adequate trash accommodations in those dumpsters. Is that your understanding?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so that's the plan, okay. The seating arrangement, you have seats both inside and outside. And one of the things I was wondering is if we're looking at parking, and maybe our attorney can weigh in on this. If we were to give approval for this, should we just grant them approval to have no parking spots, carte blanche? Or should we say no parking spots when X are required?
No parking spots, carte blanche.
Okay.
I don't want to get into the mathematics of how many parking spots
That's exactly my concern. They said they're going to be changing their seating layout seasonally.
Yeah.
It sounds like a nightmare to compute the number of parking spots required to me.
Yeah, it would be a nightmare, please don't do it.
Okay.
And plus, my target market is cyclists. Cyclists will be parking on the property. My second target market is pedestrians in the villages. They won't be parking. You know, hopefully I have a great product that people want to come from some, some distance away. But I've already talked to friends that have been to La Fabrika in Gerona in Spain that live in Fairport, and they're planning to cycle, you know, the ground. I mean, this will become a destination for cyclists. So the good news about cyclists is you don't have to calculate parking spots. So we'll, we'll provide a parking for the cyclists.
Okay. I'm trying to think of any other issues. Anyone else have any questions? It sounds like Mindy might want to have a little discussion with you.
The, the copies of the applications for site plan approval of the variances were not signed by either the owner or the applicant. The ones that we have, are there, are there signed ones?
Yeah, there are, yeah.
Okay, you have those?
I don't have the original because I don't know what made it there.
I don't care about the original. I'm just going to make sure that these, both these applications were signed.
And I think for the P D R C, if you like, see
As long as they're on file, I'm fine.
As long as they're on file, I'm fine. It's just the ones that we got, thank you for that. The ones that I had
Yeah, we talked about that earlier, so.
Yes.
We need to clean that up more.
Cool, so I'm talking to you.
Yes, I see that now.
Steve's got those.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Mindy, did you want to talk to us a little bit about this, take a break?
Yes.
Okay. We've been here in a meeting for a little while. Let's take a break for a little bit and we'd like to talk to our attorney for five or 10 minutes about some of the things we've seen swirling around and see what her thoughts are on the fence versus wall, mid-fence versus wall. So I guess I'll just make a motion to adjourn the meeting and we'll enter attorney-client session in another office, right?
Yes.
Can we, are we allowed to use the mayor's office?
Absolutely not, no.
Okay, so motion to adjourn, enter attorney-client session.
We don't need to, we don't need to leave.
No, you don't need to leave, you can stay here.
Could I, could I just ask, I'm sorry, before we do that, are there any questions that we happen to answer specific to variances of site plan that would weigh on what you guys are going to discuss? Or we'll be at an opportunity after you come in, I guess.
We'll wait till we come back, we're not going to be very long. So we may have questions for you. We just wanted to see what insight our attorney has on this that may be minimal, it may be, I don't know, we'll have to figure.
Great, okay, thanks.
So we're going to try to keep it short. So a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Yep, second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we're going to take a restroom break, folks, we'll be hopefully a few minutes. Okay, we are back, sorry for the delay, everybody. So I think what I would like to do is we've heard a lot from the applicants. I would
You need a motion, second's coming.
Okay, I make a motion to resume the meeting?
Second.
So you vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you.
Okay. So I'd like to start, I think, by just opening the public hearing and getting some comments. And I'm sorry to any members of the public for the delay here, but it was useful for us to figure out our next steps. We're going to work on it with the application. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Any votes?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so let's start by, and by the way, I'm opening the public hearing for all the applications regarding this project. So variances and the site plan. So does anyone in the room, first of all, wish to speak or provide any comments? Okay. Is there anyone online that would like to comment? You are welcome to hit your raise hand button or type a comment in the comment field.
I do have a comment.
Okay.
Art Pierce, 70th State Street, he says he fully supports the application. An exemplary site plan application with 3D perspectives, which should be adopted as a standard for all village commercial and business applications.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pierce. Is there anyone else who would like to comment? Well, we'll leave the public hearing open for now. So let's get into changes and comments. First of all, any board members, are there any changes to the plans that we would really like to see? The discussion was railing heights of 36 inches was one. I think lighting, we had no issues with, landscaping, we had no issues with. Are we generally in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Okay. And the only other things are the fences and walls. First of all, are there any other proposed changes that you've heard from other boards or other entities that is going to drive you to changing any of these fences or walls? Or is this, you think, if, if we're okay with it and we can do variances, then make them legal, then are you, are you, is this what you want to go forward with?
All the comments that we have received from boards to date are reflected in the material that this board has in front of them. So that always tweaks to some of the walls as kind of from Historic Preservation Board. We would like to offer if the board's going to consider approval tonight, the condition related to the height of the fence or the wooden fence that was commented on earlier. That could be conditioned to either be removed, modified to code compliant, or switched to a masonry material acceptable to the Historic Preservation Board. And that way we would ensure the compliance and get around that variance issue. So
Okay, so first of all, let's, let's address the variance. We talked to our council about it. On advice of council, we can accept a variance application for the wooden fence. How you, what you want to do there, if you want to change materials, that is, you're entitled to do that as well. If you want to make it masonry, you can do that.
A preference would be to leave it as the variance that occurred if it can be accepted as a variance application.
Okay, so we already have a variance application for a fence over the three-foot height. And we're going to have several types of fences here. The railing is not going to be, is going to be a permitted height. We have the stone walls and back by the building, I believe they were five foot.
Correct.
Okay, again, I'm trying to think, that's the, which side of the property is that? That's the west side.
West.
Okay, five foot on the west side. Then that's close to the building. Now we're further away from the building. So the shorter height of that wall, is that under three feet? So you have that picture, I'm looking at that picture right there, the shorter one?
This is three feet from the inside.
Oh, what is it from the outside?
From the outside, it's going to be three feet. So three and a half.
Okay, well, I guess we have, we have all of the heights listed on the height schedule.
Yep. Yeah, so we go from four feet down to three feet. These are all three feet from the inside of the courtyard, from the outside. This is five feet. And then it drops, it increases to a little over five feet and then drops to four feet. Depending on how we're looking at this.
So the maximum height of the wall is how, is what?
It's four, it's almost five feet.
Maximum height is five feet from the outside, okay.
Yeah, exactly right.
And the wooden fence here is six feet high.
It is.
Or it's 60 inches.
We dropped it to 60 inches, do you agree with that?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll make that modification in detail.
Five foot maximum on any wall exterior, is that correct?
I think that's safe with the caveat of the pillars.
Again, the pillars are slightly
Pillars step up eight inches basically because of the detail.
And then have a light on top of it as well.
Just the two in the front, other, other pillars are no pillar cap. So technically the pillar would be six feet at its highest point. If that makes sense.
Okay, pillar, six foot.
And that's inclusive or exclusive of the light?
That is, oh, that's a great question, so
Do you consider a light to be part of a pillar or fence?
Well, I don't quite consider light to be part of a wall. Light is a light, it's a shelter, energy.
Okay, so it's called a light post? So maybe it's not a fence, it's a light post.
You know what I mean?
A masonry light post.
So you might call it a light post, then I think you'd go around the block.
Yeah, so I, I think wall height and, or wall and fence height of five feet with column or column height of six feet. And that matches the detail that's been provided to this, this board of plans that reflects changes made as a result of comments from Historic Preservation.
Yeah, but 98-1A talks about fences or other structures higher than three feet. So just because it's not a fence, that doesn't mean that
Well, there's this special exception use permit thing that talks about non-able fences.
Right, so that would also be subject to the variance application, that's all I'm saying.
Okay. All right, so the description then is the, the wall and the wall slash fence height is as depicted with the height understood to be a maximum, to be five foot maximum and pillar height, six foot maximum. Okay. Okay. So that's the questions out of the way for variances. So we have three variances, we have parking, we have lot coverage, and we had fences. And so then we also have site plans. So here's what we're, I don't think we've asked for anything significant with site plans. The one issue of concern is this trash issue. So here is what the board would like from the applicant regarding the trash issue. Is because the dumpsters are not on your property, we would either like a, some letter of consent from the adjacent property owner authorizing use of those dumpsters, or we would like a Plan B presented to us in, in writing as to an alternative that uses your property. So if you're going to haul it off to another dumpster and you have permission from that other dumpster owner, just present that to us. So that's what we would like to see for handling of the trash. So we, I think what the board is likely to do tonight is we will act on some or all of the variances and we're going to leave the public hearing open for the site plan so that you can present any of these changes in trash. And the only question I have is how long, well, we can get to that, but how long we should wait for that? Should we, does, Steve, does the H P B need to act after the trustees?
No, H P
I think they do.
So trustees first, right, next week?
No, trustees are meeting, but they're setting a public hearing, so they'll meet on the 27th. So H P B needs to be
And variances normally need to go first. There's nothing, there's no pecking order for variances. They, they're needed to make the whole project legal.
Right, you already got a special meeting set up for what, why?
Yeah, and that's what I'm wondering, is if that's acceptable that we could resolve everything on that date?
The 25th.
That's right.
And that's a day after the H P B meeting, and I'm just wondering if that, if that makes any difference, if it, whether we go before or after the H P B.
So, so the question, I guess, is, so the special permit is also going to require me to have the trash issue addressed, I believe. So when we meet with the village board on the 13th, if we, if, if, if we have this Plan B in place by the time we meet with the village board and they're comfortable with it, does that not make
Well, I think
Make it compliant with your, your requirement?
Well, the village board is not acting on it until the 27th at the earliest. Okay, so our meeting there is not delaying any action on the village board. So if there's something in place and we're both content with it, then that becomes a non-issue. I don't, so I don't see our meeting on the 25th as delaying anything with the trustees, reading an ultimate
Well, let's proceed with that.
So if I could offer, does that mean that this public hearing is also going to stay open?
I would leave the public hearing open, yes.
Related to site plan?
Related to site plans. We, we normally do that. We like getting public input, that helps us do our jobs better. So usually we only close the public hearing right before we act on application.
Okay, and not that we don't want to come see you, but I just would like to ask the question whether or not that could be a condition that we need to provide that to use documentation because obviously business can't run without a planning place for trash removal. And we understand, especially on special permit side, that the village is very interested in resolving a question related to the easement. We have submitted a copy of the easement to the village attorney related to the trash. So there is documentation in place that the existing businesses utilize and that has been in place and it's legally in their deed as far as the easement. So I guess my question is, could that be a condition of this board on site plan? Given that there aren't any other issues, we understand we need to provide documentation to the village on this resulting issue. Would we consider granting site plan approval with that condition on it?
So first of So first of all, on the easement situation, I, I don't think the easement is, we don't need to get involved in that business. That's, you know, your agreements with your other property owner. If you resolve that and they, they would give us a letter or sign, hey, you can use our dumpster, we've come, we have an agreement for that, I'm fine with that. If you resolve that and they, they give us a letter or sign, hey, you can use our dumpster, we've come, we have an agreement for that, I'm fine with that. If they aren't willing to do that and you have another arrangement, I'm fine with that too. Steve?
Well, you and I discussed something earlier today, if I remember correctly, that they are correct and that the special pick not be issued without the garbage issue being settled, all right? And you can approve a site plan, that site plan becomes null and void if the special plan is not issued, that's in code.
Oh, that is true.
Yeah, but the, I think the other issue here is that we don't know what Plan B would be. So in the event that Plan B involved something permanent on the footprint of the property, that's a site plan issue that this board has to look at. So we're just trying to streamline it, we're not trying to do double work, but, you know, I mean, if Plan B involves some type of dumpster on this site, that's a site plan issue that this board has exclusive jurisdiction.
Right, we have to screen it.
Yeah, so if you're going to do totes and screening or something like that.
They can't just pass the buck on on the disposal issue.
I'm getting pretty unequivocal, I'm not going to say that word right. I can guarantee you guys that we're not going to have totes in the middle of this courtyard. So it would either be internal storage or an agreement with another property.
And that's fine.
Honestly, I wanted to ask the question.
Yep.
No, and I would thank you, Mindy, for that. I would also say that we have typically, it's better to keep things in front of us than to hope they get resolved after the fact. That historically not often worked out well.
I just can add in real quick, the village board is hesitant to set, to show a public hearing on this until they do see an agreement. That was part of the castle for them coming back on the thirteenth.
Until they see what?
An agreement on the trash.
On the trash, okay.
Or a solution.
A solution, something, okay.
Yeah, okay, so if you're, again, if you're going to haul it off and store it indoors, it's just write it, write it up and where is it going? And get their permission, I think, as far as I'm concerned, that's good enough for me in writing. Okay. So are we good to act on, on the lot coverage? Good, okay. So this is site plan, I got so much stuff. Okay, so this is lot coverage. All right, so we had a draft resolution on lot coverage. And the first question is, you're seeking an area variance for lot coverage. It's two-ten-twenty-one dot six, which is the bulk requirements section in code. And you're requesting to have ninety-five percent lot coverage when sixty percent lot coverage is maximum permitted. Steve, does that sound accurate to you?
Yes, but you're also going from a hundred to ninety-five, they are actually including the previous service coverage of the property.
Okay, well, if we, if we grant it, then it's allowed, but the ninety-five percent number is, you're accepting that?
Yes.
Okay.
So is that a modification of the application?
I think that was in their application was ninety-five percent, that's what they have written up in there. I just wanted to confirm that number. What the number is, is just a number. Okay, so. Let's go over some findings for this. So will this, the lot coverage create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood?
No.
I would say no, yes. So the site is going to look better and it's actually, they're already at the lot coverage. So lot coverage is actually improving slightly.
So the lot coverage itself, as well as the overall aesthetics, will improve?
Yep. So it'll be more attractive, lot coverage is going to improve, and they've also accommodated drainage. The next question is whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method. I would say they cannot be. Can't construct a, you can't construct anything here without violating the lot coverage. I can go a little quicker by not writing notes. Okay. Next question is whether this is substantial, and I would say it is not substantial because the change in lot coverage is negligible.
Right, agreed. They're actually improving lot coverage.
Okay, and whether this will have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions? I would just say C.A., is what we normally do, the first one. And as to whether this is self-created, we usually say the desire for this is self-created, but this alone does not preclude an area variance.
That's such a funny one.
Such a what?
It's weird.
It is, I mean, everyone is coming in with something of their own creation, they want to do something that's not a lot of. Okay, so the variance, is or is not the minimum necessary to provide relief? They can't really construct a patio with anything smaller. An attractive patio with a smaller variance, I don't think. So I'll say it is the minimum necessary, and a slight difference in lot coverage would not, would not change the impacts. So if they were dropping from ninety-five to ninety-three, that would not be a significant change in impacts. Okay, any other characteristics of the property we want to mention? I would say it's in the downtown region of the village and many properties have close to a hundred percent lot coverage in this general area. So it's consistent with other properties nearby, maybe we can add that to our answers for A and D as well. Lot buildings have that. Any other thoughts?
No, sounds good, consistent with the neighborhood.
Okay. I don't see a need for any conditions of approval, does anyone else? Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the area variance for lot coverage for the reasons mentioned.
Second.
Okay, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. All right, so you got one out of the way, but we're going to go through this again for other variances, if we're going to act on them. Let's see, what's the next one we have? Well, that's site plan, site plan. Site plan.
Parking.
Yeah, I have to find the one, although they all say the same thing. I just like to scribble on the actual one. Okay, okay. All right, so they have applied for an area variance against the parking code two-ten-twenty-five dash two to allow zero parking spots for a commercial business. And let's go ahead and go into that. So the first question is, will it create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties?
No, just the opposite.
So it'll be much more attractive. Okay, any other, you want to elaborate any?
Maybe mention it's. Consistent with the comprehensive plan in terms of walkability and public access.
We have many properties downtown in the village have no parking.
And that?
There is, yeah, there is a parking lot across the street.
Adequate parking throughout the village.
We should at least recognize that we're forcing the neighbor to, to provide parking for a competitor against his wishes.
What are we doing?
People driving up, coming down State Street wanting to go to this business are going to see a parking, see cars parked and they're going to park there. And it's going to be Charlie Fitzsimmons parking lot. This was, this was an issue with, with the bank on the corner of Church and Main Street. It was such an issue with them that they had to hire a uniformed guard to keep, to keep the parking free for the, for banking customers and not other people looking for parking. I think we should at least recognize that, that that's a concern. That we should recognize that, that we addressed, we considered that.
Well, do you want them to, let's say, put a sign on their property that says, don't park in the bakery's parking lot, please park across the street?
I don't.
Or is that not our concern? Or is that a site plan thing?
I think that's an enforcement issue, I don't see that as a site plan issue.
Or variance.
If people are going to trespass, that's not a site plan issue.
So it is my intent, I mean, I'll have to check the code on signage, but one of the things I've told my team is I would like to put up signage for both the Phoenix Building, which is Mike Newcomb, and the Village Bakery, which is Charlie Fitzsimmons. For both of those properties, I would like to put up signage that says, if you're coming to the fabrica, please park across the street in the village lot. Parking is across the street in the village lot. And we're going to have to come up with the, you know, the right words, but I believe that's wise and judicious. I don't, I don't want bad relations with either Mr. Newcomb or Mr. Fitzsimmons. And I think the point that Mr. Reynolds is making is, is valid. And I've actually, I've actually told Charlie that I will put up signage to the extent I can within code to discourage my patrons from, from, from parking in his lot. Because I, I agree, it's, it's a risk. So we are going to need to do our best on signage and we'll have to need code, but that's, I don't, I don't want bad relations with my neighbors, so. And again, my target market is cyclists, but I do feel that there will be people that will drive to this, this, this location, you know, other than cycling or walking, and they're going to have to be told very explicitly, park across the street.
I believe the Phoenix Building parker minority has signage for parking for Phoenix patrons only. And perhaps you could do a words of bakery, say, park Phoenix, park my, or Baker, Baker patrons only. Not say, let's say, complete park somewhere else, and then you would put in a bakery, this, this is where bakery.
Okay, so another thing we noted previously when it came before us is there is no way to legally operate any business in this location with the parking requirements in the village. So it, you either turn it into residential, which isn't going to happen, or they need a parking variance. Any other thoughts on, on this? So we said aesthetics will improve, many properties downtown and no parking. There's adequate parking across the street and elsewhere in the village. The applicant is willing to erect signs advising where to park. And also, no business can operate in this location and comply with parking. Is there any other thoughts, anyone has?
Left out the part about the comprehensive plan.
Oh, this is, how is this, do you have any verbiage for that?
Just say it's consistent with the overall vision of the comprehensive plan to increase public. Village walk, pardon?
Passive transportation.
Yeah. And, yeah.
To create destinations and encourage walkability and passive, okay. Okay. The next one, whether this can be achieved by some other feasible method, and I would say no, there's no other feasible method. There is no way to build parking on the site. And is this substantial? I guess we have to say yes. So it is substantial, they're asking for zero parking spots when parking is required. But what, what does this accomplish? Any thoughts? Improve the appearance?
Not only improves appearance, but it's consistent with non-vehicular.
It's safer.
You can see A and B.
Can I offer something for that for you?
Sure.
Yeah.
I think it's substantial related to the minimum requirements within your code for parking, but it's similar to the lot coverage. It's insubstantial related to the existing minimum spaces on the site, right now there's only five. So you're not going from forty down to zero, you're really going from an existing business that only had five spaces not in compliance. And so it's a relatively minimal difference from what existed.
Going from, from five, is it five right now, Steve? Okay, so let's say a reduction from five parking spots to zero is not a large change. So it is substantial in terms of relative to what the code requires, but not substantial in the relative change in what's going on on the property. Or not a large change.
Physical reality.
Physical reality, yeah, we can work on tweaking the language, we just need to get a few talking points together.
Yep.
For D, whether it will have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions? I think we would say no, it'll improve, improve appearance, drainage is accommodation.
I see, I see.
Yeah. And the difficulty, again, is self-created, but this alone is not a reason to not grant a variance. Okay.
Say it's code, anyway.
It's code-related, yeah, bad code is. I don't know how they're going to require parking downtown in the village, but anyway. We can say this is the minimum necessary to provide relief for the project sought. They can't make a, can't make a patio without eliminating parking. Physical characteristics of the property and other findings. I think it's kind of important to note some of the, that the parking lot was kind of dangerous. And so the existing parking lot was known to be dangerous. Steve, there are bollards and planters and cars are constantly hitting them, damaging the bollards and damaging the cars, is that correct?
Somebody was on top of one two weeks ago.
Someone was on top of one of those?
Oh my god.
Very true, probably.
Is it almost a daily occurrence when that's opening that someone hits that, or maybe not quite that often, at least weekly?
It's, it's a mess, it's been a mess, and like you said, somebody literally.
It's, it's a mess. It's been a mess. And like you said, somebody literally backed all the way up on the one two weeks ago.
And then you said there is another parking spot over by the side door that encroached on the, that encroached on the egress for the building?
It's in there, like with parking spots. It implies an egress, an required egress access from the building.
A, will we call it an informal parking spot?
Pardon?
What are we calling that? An informal parking spot?
Illegal.
Illegal.
Okay.
And non-compliant.
Okay, non. Except it's marked as handicapped parking right now, isn't it?
Yes, but it's, it's not, it's not a legal spot because it's blocking, you can't use one compliant or ADA spot to block another required ADA requirement.
So that particular parking spot was blocking both an egress door and was blocking a travel lane in the other parking lot. And so that, I looked at that and that travel lane was awfully narrow. It dropped it down to like 10 or 11 feet wide. And any car parked there is just going to get hit very likely. Anything else anyone wants to add? Okay. I didn't have one for this town.
Are we going to, do we do that when we do the other?
Oh yeah, we got to vote on this.
Yeah.
Okay. So we talked about findings for this. I'll make a motion that we improve the area variance for the parking for the reasons stated. How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And are we good to go forward on the fence as well? Mindy, do you see any reason for us to hold off on the fence?
Which fences?
Fence variances and the fence.
No, not much. I want to do all the fence variances at the same time.
I think we are going to, I think they're not changing anything. So we have a, we have an application for a fence variance. Or should we just ask them to amend it?
Well, I, I thought that it was going to be amended to include other fences.
The wooden fence.
That wasn't part of the application.
Okay. So do we just ask for them verbally to change it?
Sure.
Okay. So are you guys going to amend your fence application to include the wooden fence?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. So we will act on a area variance application for the wooden fence and the masonry walls, which are also known as a masonry fence. And again, just to repeat from earlier discussion, the maximum height of fences, so the height of the fences are included in the application. The maximum height of any wood or masonry fence presented is five feet from the outside of the property. And the pillar height is up to six feet. With that said, I don't have a draft one for the fences, but we can just go through the criteria from the other.
You prepare one.
Did you have one?
Yeah.
Do you want to make copies of that?
Sure.
Can you make a few copies? I find it helpful to at least scribble down a few of our findings and then hand it to our secretary to sort out when they review the tape.
The Wall Street Journal just had a story about excessive, excess parking across the country.
Yeah, that's a problem. The amount of surface area of this country devoted to parking is insane.
And one of the things they mentioned is that, they said that Buffalo has eliminated all parking requirements.
I remember hearing something.
For residential, commercial, nobody has to nobody has to provide any parking for anything.
Except for around the Louisville stadium, we'll have some.
We passed one.
He was first. That's all right. This is fences. So this is again, the relevant code is 98.1. Steve, where is the, what is the relevant codes? We have 98.1, is that it?
Pardon?
The relevant codes for the fence variances, is 98.1 the only place where it dictates fence height? Or is it in the commercial code as well?
I think it's only 98.1.
Okay. So this is the construction of a wood fence and masonry fence. Over three feet in the height. Okay. And that's in a front yard. All right. Any thoughts on whether it creates undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties?
Will, will not. And will improve currently underused dangerous parking lot.
Let's say, well, the fences, the fence is the key reason for the fence is safety and screening. I can't see how the fences would impact adjacent parking lots. I mean, there's, there's a visual aspect of them.
Well, it's a, it delimits them.
Yeah.
And the existing topography makes it impossible. The sloping topography makes it impossible to do anything less.
So it will prove the appearance of the property. It will provide screening. The adjacent properties are parking lots and this is needed for safety.
Well, I mean, and it's integral to the overall visual concept.
Integral to the whole visual concept. I like that. The benefits sought by the applicant, can they be achieved by another mean method? I would say no. And again, we can state a fence is required for safety. Fence or wall. Safety and screening. Is this substantial? These are fairly tall. Three feet is allowed and they're going to five feet. I would say, I think it is substantial, but the conditions of the property and the circumstances dictate it. For D, I guess we can just say CA. And our typical answer for whether it's self-created. Are these fence heights the minimum necessary to provide relief? I hadn't thought about that. You said the wooden fences, you can't accommodate the use of bicycle storage with anything shorter.
And also for the purposes of bike wash area, anything under five feet will mean that patrons of those bakery will be sprayed as they walk by.
For bicycle, so you need it for bicycle rack. And provide a barrier for the bicycle wash area. Okay.
Yeah, I could say not to impinge on the neighboring property. Patrons.
We can tweak some of these things. There's one discussed, at least a few things. Now as far as the stone wall goes, the taller one is close to the building and blends in with the building appearance. Any comments? Well, you have the big step up, right? For the patio, the patio needs to be raised, which requires the taller fence height, right?
Correct. And we're at the twelve compliant height on the interior quarter. It's the grade which we can't control at the exterior that defines who the rest will be from as well.
Okay. So is, so is due, it's due to the raised patio and grade at the site, correct? Okay. So I guess we'll say it is the minimum necessary to provide relief. And for fences, are there any other characteristics? I guess the other characteristic is the adjacent parking lots are substandard and dangerous and a firm barrier is needed. I might have already said that. Other things, Mindy, you advised we should comment on visibility of fences from neighboring properties.
Yes.
What do you want to say about that? Any thoughts? It's definitely visible. The masonry fences, your whole design of that is to be compatible with the building materials of that building, correct?
Correct.
So, so the masonry fence is visible, but the materials are intended to make it blend into the, to be compatible with and blend into the building.
For both the mason and?
That's for the masonry fence.
You might want to reference that the height would adjust based on a recommendation of the historic preservation board.
Yeah. So for the door, the wall is based on input from the historic preservation board. Okay. What about the wood ones? Any thoughts on visibility of the wood fence? Appropriateness?
Well, you could say it's consistent with fencing throughout the historic village.
Well, but it's not consistent with what fences in the front yard. But, well.
There are wooden fences in front yards.
Not tall ones, but we don't normally have parking lots in the front yards with.
Also using that to provide some variation in materials. Consistency with benching material that kind of thing. So it's complementary to the, to the building, the masonry use.
Okay, complimentary. So it's visible but intentional to be a complementary feature in the overall aesthetic scheme, right?
Right.
With natural materials.
Okay. So compatibility of the fence, the general visual character of the surrounding area. I think we kind of talked about that. We talked about compatibility with their overall aesthetic scheme and with the existing building.
Yeah, just see above.
Okay. So on this draft, we had two conditions of approval, which were that the historic preservation board shall approve the fencing. And there's also one here for the board of trustees should grant a special use permit for this. Mindy, do you think both of those make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Obviously if they don't get a special use permit, there's no need for six foot or five foot fence heights.
Correct.
Okay. Any other conditions you'd recommend? We don't normally do a lot of them with variances.
I think that's fine. The only other one that you might want to consider is just whether you want to be conditioned on the overall site plan approval. The only other one that you might wanna consider is just whether one would be conditioned on the overall site plan approval. Because this is very specific to this site plan.
Yes, I may get conditioned on site plan approval. Okay, anything else? Anyone wants to add?
Good job.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the area variance for the wood and masonry fences presented to us. I guess that's all I have to say.
Second.
Okay, how do you vote?
Aye.
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 Oh, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for all three area variances.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, all right, well, that gets half your applications to the village handled, I I think. We'll work on refining our write-ups of these and get them out at some point. Um, the so then the last outstanding item is to present a Plan B trash option or consent from your neighboring property to use their dumpster. Um, so I'll make a motion to keep the public hearing open for the site plans. Uh, and we will reconvene on the twenty-fifth. I believe the date, yes, the twenty-fifth at six thirty PM. And I would, I presume you won't have any issues with, you can get us on plans the previous day?
Yeah, we intend to address this very, very quickly. We 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 want it addressed in time to the village board. So I'm hopeful by the time we move those board, we'll have that addressed. We'll have a letter to the to the planning board for that.
Okay. So, um, I think that's that's it for you guys then.
I have a public comment.
Um, uh, we have another public comment for the site plan for anything, right?
I'm gonna guess it's site plan.
Okay, well, we we still have that open, okay?
Our peers, State Street, no reason why the board cannot approve the plan subject to resolution of the dumpster. This is standard land development process. There's no purpose to delay in the.
Okay, well, we already heard commentary from our attorney as to why it makes sense to um do it as we want to see how is the that may require physical changes to the site. Um, anyway, um, it's not gonna delay anything because the trustees are still gonna be voting after our next meeting. So, um, that's usually the ultimate reason. Um, I know you're trying to get your permits this month. We're having a special meeting, so trying to do what we can to accommodate that, so.
We're very grateful and I'm also very grateful for how long you all stayed and the time and attention that you've given us. Very appreciative, so thank you very much and I I found it very, very constructive and fair, so thank you.
Well, we try to be and you guys have done a great job on all your plans. These are really stand out from, um, so good job on that. And I know you're putting a lot of good hard work into it, so. Um, and I don't think, yeah, as long as you present some plans, I don't think we need your whole crew to come back next time. I I know they tend to charge for visits, so.
Well, I may not be able to make the next meeting, so it'll be mad of a ride. They're probably gonna pull straw.
Yeah, well, if somebody hears, that's fine, but, uh, you know, we don't need an engineer, a landscape architect and a and a few other specialists, so. Uh, but you can bring them if you want.
Yeah, unfortunately, I will be in Spain meeting with the owners of the farm that are trying to finalize my license agreement, so, uh, that's where I will be. So I regret I won't be able to see this 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 group at that meeting, but I will be back in time for the public hearing on the twenty-seventh.
Okay. Um, all right, well, um, thank you, gentlemen, and thank you for the good descriptions and explanations and and your details. I must say, I really appreciated that you included the summary of some of the comments from the other boards in here, because I couldn't attend those meetings, so we were curious as to what feedback and so on we received. And, um, so thank you very much for for some of that, that's appreciated.
Would you like to keep a full-size set?
You can, well, I don't need the full-size set. They after here, the stuff is not going in. Perfect, is not going into any archive of mine.
Or if you or somebody else have a full-size set? Does Megan have a full-size? She has one, okay.
Yeah, there should be one around here. Okay. Do you have minutes for a special meeting? Or do you wanna deal with it now?
Minutes.
All right, so then adjourn?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
You second, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so Dorothea will have minutes on our next agenda and these two applications on our next agenda.
Okay.
And Dorothea, thank you for sticking around so late.